Twenty twenty one city council meeting in order. Would everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Council member Lisa Parker.
President.
Hutchings. Council member Hutchings.
Here.
Ruffridge.
Here.
Pamela Parker.
Here.
Carrie.
President.
Chilson.
President.
Student representative Cox.
Here.
You have a quorum.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda?
I will move to approve the agenda and consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffridge. Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you, Mr. Carrie. Are there any changes to the agenda or consent agenda?
Mayor Whitney?
Thank you. I would like to move to amend the December sixteen twenty twenty council meeting minutes by a substitute of December sixteen twenty twenty council meeting minutes. And I request that the approval of substitute meeting minutes remain on the consent agenda.
And, Mr. Mayor, I have a second modification to request. I would, I would move to amend resolution twenty twenty one dash zero zero five by replacing the information memorandum attached to the resolution. The replacement memorandum correctly identifies that all other FMAs in the state receiving more than four thousand dollars are using the alternative method rather than the standard method. I would also request that the approval of resolution twenty twenty one dash zero zero five remain on the consent agenda as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chilson. Would the clerk please read the consent agenda? Give me a second. Are there any objections to the suggested changes? Seeing none, would the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Approval of the December sixteenth twenty twenty council meeting minutes as amended. New business resolutions, resolution twenty twenty one commending the role of educators, parents, and support staff during the COVID nineteen pandemic, introduced by council member Carrie. Resolution twenty twenty one oh oh three authorizing the city manager to negotiate directly and enter into a sole source professional service agreement with Burkhart Croft Architects for the design of Soldatna Regional Sports Complex major maintenance and renovation project, introduced by the city manager. Resolution twenty twenty one oh oh four authorizing the city manager to into enter into an amended lease agreement with AK Skate Shop for retail space at the Soldatna Regional Sports Complex, introduced by the city manager. And resolution twenty twenty one oh oh five adopting an alternate allocation method for the FY twenty one Shared Fisheries Business Tax Program and certifying that this allocation method fairly represents the distribution of significant effects of fisheries businesses activity in FMA fourteen Cook Inlet area. Attachment amended, introduced by the city manager, and that is your consent agenda.
Are there any public comments on any of the items just read by the clerk? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. And I have one request from Ms. Tamara Miller. Ms. Miller? Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name's Tamara Miller, four six five two three Blue Shadow Court, Soldatna. My, I, I just want to make sure. I know you guys have the sports center on your agenda. Is this the proper time to talk about that, or will we have public comment later?
There will be public comment on that resolution at a later date in the agenda.
Oh, so I should wait till then?
Yes.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one I see is Mr. Nate Keel. Mr. Keel? Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to speak on the consent agenda.
This is Nate Keel. My address is four oh four Lawton Drive, Kenai. I'm actually, I had the same question that Tamara just asked, and so I'll reserve for later.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised. Having no one else wishing to speak, the approval of the agenda and consent agenda is back before the council. Are there any council objections to approving the agenda and consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda and agenda are approved. Council member Carrie will now read commending resolution twenty twenty one dash zero zero two into the record.
Give me a minute, I gotta find it. There we go. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Carrie.
I'm looking for it on the list. Sorry, I wasn't know I was gonna read it. I'd like to pass on reading it. It's, I've got it here, but I don't know where it is. And basically, there's nothing I can say that's adequate to support the educators that are teaching all of our kids, whether in public or private schools. And I appreciate the students and the staff and the parents, and I just want to do something to tell teachers. I appreciate them, and this resolution was the best I could do, and they deserve a lot better. But I appreciate that being able to have the council approve this.
Mr. Carrie, I have the resolution here in front of me. Would you like me to read it for you?
That, that would be excellent.
Okay. Resolution twenty twenty dash zero zero two, a resolution commending the role of educators, parents, and support staff during the COVID nineteen pandemic. Whereas the coronavirus, COVID nineteen in twenty twenty, placed demands upon education of all subjects to reshape the methods of delivering education to meet the needs of all our students. And whereas the educational demands brought on by the coronavirus were immediate and long term, requiring a rethinking of how to teach and what to teach. And whereas being a teacher has always been at the top of a student's goal when considering their future and who they admire. And whereas parents will always be the first teachers of our students, their support and involvement is a critical determiner in the success of education. And whereas the support staff for teachers provide great assistance for teachers and also students as they shape the environment for education and humanize the process. And whereas education is the highest civilian priority of America, and whereas funding of our schools, employees, activities, and programs is our most precious commitment of funding. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Soldatna, Alaska, section one, that the City of Soldatna wishes to commend the role of educators, parents, and support staff to our students during this time of crisis and uncertainty due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Section two, that during the twenty twenty one calendar year, teachers will be our models for dedication, perseverance, and creativity during the ongoing crisis brought on by the COVID nineteen pandemic. Section three, this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption and adopted by the City Council this thirteenth day of January twenty twenty one.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, can I add one sentence now?
Go ahead.
Thank you, because I've got it. When I initially asked, when you said to send something in, I did, I asked the clerk if this is something that you would read, and she said it was more appropriate that I read it. I just want to say I really appreciate, Mr. Mayor, that you read it, because I think you are, yeah, you are the front for the council out to the community, and so I thank you very much for reading this.
Thank you, Mr. Carrie.
Mayor Whitney?
I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Parker, go ahead.
With the consent of Council member Carrie and yourself, I would request that a copy of this be sent not only to the superintendent, but to all of the, all of the schools on the Kenai Peninsula.
Awesome.
Sounds like an excellent idea. And will the city clerk see to that?
We will take care of it.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is presentation with prior notice and Project Homeless Connect. Jody Stewart, Project Homeless Connect media chairperson. Ms. Stewart, you are up. You'll have ten minutes.
I just promoted her to panelist. It'll take a second for her to come over.
Go ahead, Ms. Stewart.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. So my understanding is that the presentation will be uploaded. Is that correct?
No, we were gonna share your screen.
Okay, hold on just a moment, guys, and I will be right with you. I apologize for the delay. It'll take just a moment. Every council meeting is different, so I always like to test things out ahead of time, but sometimes it doesn't quite work out. But it is opening ever so slowly. Thinking about it. I apologize to the council members. While this is doing that, let me just introduce myself. So my name is Jody Stewart. I am the Project Homeless Connect public relations media liaison. And really what I'm talking about tonight is we are in a decade of addressing homelessness on the Kenai Peninsula. For a decade, I have been talking to folks about homelessness, near homelessness. I have been, what I like to say, the voice of the voiceless, because the folks that are homeless, the folks that are near homeless, they're not going to be here at a city council meeting, even though you've made it very easy to join. They're not going to be the ones saying that they need to have services. They're not going to tell you that they are, they are in need. So with no further ado, I believe I can share my screen now. All right, can you see my presentation slides?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And as you can see, the wheel of doom is already starting to spin. So traditionally, Project Homeless Connect has been a one-day event. This year, it won't be. It'll be drastically different, but this information is really for the new council members, folks that haven't heard me speak before, to kind of give you an idea of what the expectation is. So traditionally, it's a one-day, one-stop location where services can be received by all individuals. That being said, we have traditionally used the sports center for many of our ten years of the Project Homeless Connect. So thank you for your support last year and allowing us to use the sports center without it being at a cost to us. Our budget is very small, so that was a huge help for us to be able to focus those entities and those funds towards the things that really are needed and necessary. And the spinning wheel of doom yet again. So one of the reasons why we come is to talk about the essential elements of Project Homeless Connect, which you can see the first one is to get political and civic will. We want to make sure that we reprioritize things like resources. We try to get better community partnerships. We want to really work against the silos of our communities to talk about how we can mobilize to support those that have no voice and are working towards self-sustainability. Now that being said, a lot of the information in the remainder of this particular presentation is going to talk about what we've traditionally done. And because I keep seeing this spin, for lack of a better word, I will tell you as we go through, and things may catch up. But traditionally, we offer things like haircuts. We offer massages. We've offered Narcan training. We offered flu shots. We've offered a variety of things where you could physically go and do them. These are all needed and necessary, and for us to go back to this concept of a one-stop location is still important. It's still something that we will continue to ask for, COVID nineteen notwithstanding, although they are continuing to cause hiccups in our processes. Some of the data, this is what you guys need to know. These are the constituency that we are serving. These are people that are in our community. Now, for every Project Homeless Connect, we have folks that participate in the event, but they represent a bigger number of people in their household. So dad might come into the event, and he might have a wife and two kids. So obviously, this event doesn't impact just dad that showed up, but the rest of the family, and that's what this graph shows. And you can see that the number of participants and the number in the household have increased over time. If you've read today's paper, you will have seen the article, which talks a little bit about some of the things that we're talking about tonight. So I'm not going to rehash that, but I will point out that the member, the number of people with disabilities is high. So this is a marginalized population. This is a population that does not get represented very well. So not only are they facing homelessness or near homelessness, they have additional disabilities that they're dealing with. And that means getting to services is much more complicated. The slide shows where people are mostly staying, and thankfully, we are a community of friends and family that support each other and offer couches and beds and places to sleep. But many folks are still not without a house, a place to call home. They often are also located in places that are not habitable. I hear stories every day of people staying in sheds with honey buckets. I hear stories of people living in their car at minus ten degrees. This is a real and trying situation, because we have no real shelter. Our statistics have changed over time in regards to why a person is homeless. But as you can see, loss of job is always pretty high, and last year it was our highest reason for people to be homeless or near homeless. And I expect twenty twenty one to be the same. This one might be a little bit difficult to see, but here we ask folks, you know, is this the first time you've attended? Were the services that you received helpful, and did you feel treated with respect? These are all important aspects, and I can tell you traditionally and consistently, they always find the services helpful, and they always feel treated respectfully. And so when we extrapolate the data, you can see that seventy percent experience, you know, alcohol abuse, developmental disabilities, drug use, HIV/AIDS, mental health issues, physical disabilities. You notice that disability shows up twice in that category. Our statistics are pretty close to where we were last year. For instance, it was like eighteen percent, I want to say in twenty nineteen compared to twenty percent for the loss of job. It was like three percent for those released out of jail and four percent this year, as far as statistics. But really, we're dealing with the same problem. It's minutia. Things that they've requested, things that they said that they need, legal help, mental health support, men's housing options that may not be religious-based, a cold emergency weather shelter, and I will say that again, a cold weather emergency shelter, because what do we need? We need a cold weather emergency shelter. And in addition to that, a non-domestic violence option for women and children. We don't have that either. The Food Bank was able to get CARES Act money, and through that CARES Act money, they were able to increase the amount of food given to folks over an eleven-week period. So traditionally, for those eleven weeks, twelve consistent students in transition received additional food boxes. But overall, what you can see from this is that there was a gradual increase and then pretty steady throughout the eleven weeks of people in need. This is my concern leading up to the event here this year. So where did you sleep on January twenty sixth is the question, and we will be doing a point-in-time count, which is different than the event that we normally do. A point-in-time count counts where you slept on that day, and then that data allows for additional HUD funding. So this year's event goes from January twenty seventh all the way to February tenth, because that's the window upon which we can count. We have ended the event officially in all of our flyers and such for February eighth in order to be able to collect and submit the data in time to HUD. Again, I just want to say that this has been a decade, and of that decade, I have been here and I have been speaking to you. I've been speaking to the council, and I appreciate your time and your effort. And my one call to action is we need to do more. We need to have this in the forefront of everyone's mind. And that includes you guys as a council, you as, as mayor. Because without you helping to advocate with us, we will never make change. We will never make this problem go away. These are our friends. These are our, our neighbors. These are people that are just like you and me, that may be struggling because of a medical issue. So I'd like to ask this year, since things are so very different, that you join us in advocacy and you help us to advocate at the legislative level, and you make it clear that housing is important and homelessness needs to end on the Kenai Peninsula. If anyone on the council would have any questions, I am happy to answer them.
There any questions from the council? I don't see any. Thank you very much, Ms. Stewart, for your presentation, and hopefully we can get this problem taken care of and solved here in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the council's time. Thank you, Mary Whitney, and thank you all for being a part of this event, because the faces that I see on council, I am happy to say I see elsewhere at our meetings too, and I am grateful for your participation. I'd just like to, again, make that last ask that we move this a step forward, and if each of you can figure out a way to advocate for our cause, be that voice for the voiceless. Thank you so much for your time.
I might add one, one more thing, Ms. Stewart. Maybe you could mention where these, the Project Homeless Connect is going to be taking place this year from January twenty seventh through February tenth.
Certainly. So they are at the variety of food box drop-offs that the Food Bank has partnered with area churches and organizations. So on the twenty seventh, Love, Love Inc., Lee Shore will be doing their regular count within their regular business day. So anybody that uses those services can come in that day and be counted. In addition, the Food Bank will be doing it on, I want to say it's like the twenty seventh, twenty eighth, twenty ninth. And then it goes kind of in increments, and so we'll be at the United Methodist Church in Kenai in Nikiski. We'll be at the Sterling Senior Center. We will be at the Nanulchik Senior Center. We'll be having events going on in Homer, in Anchor Point, in Seward. So we're kind of all over the peninsula, ending on February second for those particular food drop days. The rest of the time is going to be spent boots on the ground, going to homeless camps, and those will be peppered throughout the two weeks.
Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Mary Whitney?
Yes, Vice Mayor Parker.
Jody, will there be posted at the Food Bank and at places where folks go, a schedule that shows where the food boxes will be distributed, so people will be able to look at that and go, oh, I can go over to United Methodist on Friday and pick up my box?
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Yes, that information has been going out over the last couple of weeks in the Food Bank boxes. So that way it could get to the location of the folks that are picking them up, and then all of our agencies that partner with us also have them posted.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you again, Ms. Stewart.
Thank you so much.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda is public comments and presentations. These are, are there any members of the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. And I see one hand raised, and that is the phone number ending in three, three, six, zero. You'll have three minutes, and please state your name and address for the record.
For the person with phone number three, three, six, zero, star six, should unmute your phone.
Hello?
Go ahead. Please state your name.
Am I heard?
Yeah, please state your name and address for the record.
Deborah Jerome, three, five, three, five, nine, Poppy Ridge, Soldatna, Alaska.
Go ahead.
Please, everyone, if you care about persons, please listen to me with your full attention. This is a voice of a woman who was homeless here on the peninsula for one and a half years. As God is my witness, it's by His grace that I am still alive today. No agency would help me. I went to Love Inc. for a year and a half. I've called them desperately and gone there. They refused to help me. I went to churches for some form of a little warm spot. And keep in mind, I'm sixty-nine years old, so I was sixty-eight when this first started, with physical health problems. There desperately needs to be a good, clean, warm, caring shelter for human beings in this area. I can't, don't have time to tell you the horrendous stories that I've gone through, the abuses and the traumas and unhealthful conditions. I'm trying to summarize this. Right before the meeting, I did glance through some of the Soldatna quote, Soldatna cares unquote, where hundreds of thousands of dollars are given all around, sir. Yes, I'm a little angry. I went through complete hell. It's a wonder I didn't lose my mind. A man was going to mutilate my body. I went to these churches, like I said, they all referred me to Love Inc. Love Inc. has judged me and blamed me for things I did not do, and the board refused me for a year and a half. By the grace of God and a caring landlord, I am in a beautiful rental home that I started living in January first. But do you know what? I have a passion in my heart to help persons who are homeless, and I have a voice that I've developed over sixty-nine years and much of it trauma and abuse. So haircuts are fine and a food box is great here and there. We, as people, I'm a community member here, I pay taxes, I do volunteer work, et cetera. We need a good, clean, warm, caring shelter and center for persons who are homeless. If the statistics I recently heard are correct, there are over five hundred persons homeless on the peninsula. Right now, there's people freezing and starving and dying. Love Inc. is not doing its job, as God is my witness. And I'm not going to carry on. But I have a voice. I was raised up to speak about this, and upon my last breath, I will be speaking and doing what I can to help human beings.
Thank you, ma'am.
They give millions of dollars to the animal shelter. No shelter unless you have a drug or alcohol problem.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments.
Okay, thank you so much.
Are there any questions from the council?
This is true, and...
Seeing no questions from the council, I thank you again.
They didn't have questions the last two times I went in there. No one cares here. Soldatna does not care.
Thank, thank you, ma'am. We do care. Thank you for your comments. I do not see any other hands raised for any public comments. Moving along, we will now go to item six on the agenda, Assembly and Legislative Report. Are there any representatives from the borough or the state in attendance who would like to speak? Are there any representatives from the borough or the state in attendance who would like to speak? I see no hands raised, so we will move on to, uh, item seven on the agenda, Public Hearings. Uh, testimony limited to three minutes per speaker. Uh, first one up is ordinance 2020 dash zero, two, nine, amending Soldatna Municipal Code Title II, Chapter Four, City Council by enacting a new subchapter 15 titled Meeting Time Restrictions, Uncompleted Agenda and Amending Subchapter 30, Paragraph A, to include a place on the agenda for uncompleted agenda items introduced by Vice Mayor Parker. Uh, may I have a motion to enact?
I would so move to enact ordinance 2020 dash zero, two, nine.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. May I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. And a report from Vice Mayor Parker.
Um, thank you, Mayor Whitney. Here, a month or so ago, we had quite a long meeting that lasted, lasted for, for five hours and everybody was getting tired, it had been a long day. And many places around the state have limitations on when meetings need to adjourn by. And in talking with the city clerk after that meeting, I asked if we had anything in, in our city code that addressed that and she said no. So that is why I'm proposing that we place into the city code that meetings adjourn by 10 o'clock at night. We start at 6 o'clock, so that's a, that's a four hour meeting. Um, lots can be discussed and conveyed during that time. We, um, putting a deadline on when the council must adjourn assures the public can attend and participate in our meetings during reasonable hours. So, um, I would appreciate your favorable consideration of this ordinance.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. Uh, public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Uh, for those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand. Just a moment, did we have a second on that? We did, okay. Uh, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. I see no hands raised, uh, so we will close the public hearing. Having a hearing, having no one else who wishes to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Seeing none, uh, call for the vote.
Councilmember Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Pamela Parker?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Parker?
Yes.
Student Representative Cox?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
The ordinance 2020 dash 29 is enacted on a vote of six to zero. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is ordinance 2020 dash zero, three, zero, amending Soldatna Municipal Code Title II, Chapter Four, City Council enacting a new subchapter 35 titled Defeated Legislation Reintroduction. And this is, uh, proposed by Vice Mayor Parker. May I have a motion to enact?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move to enact ordinance 2020 dash zero, three, zero.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. May I have a second?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Carrie.
Thank you.
A report from Vice Mayor Parker.
Again, thank you, thank you, Mayor Whitney. We've had a lot of issues that we've addressed this, this past nine months. Um, and following some recent meetings that we had, I asked the city clerk if we had anything in our code that, um, prohibited me from introducing an, an ordinance or a resolution and it gets defeated and then bringing it back up. And we currently do not. As you know, at the state level, if you have a bring forward an initiative or a referendum, there is a time period with when, which when that can come back again. And so when you, the city, uh, the Kenai Peninsula Borough has in their code, uh, a time period that between, to pass between defeated legislation and before you can bring it back to the deliberative body. Since we did not, I've proposed this, this ordinance and I believe by doing this, um, it will help, help the city. Um, it's, it's pretty much an administrative matter and, um, kind of like the previous ordinance, it's kind of cleaning up things in our code that maybe we thought were there but aren't there. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. Uh, the public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand. If you would like to comment, app users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. And I see no hands raised. Uh, we will, the item is now back before the council. Are there any council comments? Mr. Ruffridge?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just wanted to discuss maybe briefly, um, if it's okay, the, uh, the time limit of 60 days. Um, I guess for me it seems like a, uh, a short duration. Um, I did some checking around and it seemed like other legislative bodies had a, a, a minimum of, of potentially 90 days, um, and sometimes longer. So, uh, just a question on where the 60 day mark, uh, originated.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Um, thank you, Mayor Whitney, uh, Councilmember Ruffridge. It was working with the city clerk and trying to be consistent with nearby communities in, in coming up with that 60 days. My, my preference would be more like along the lines of 90 to 180. Um, because I, I believe if you defeat legislation and then you immediately bring it back, you are doing a disservice to, to the public who, um, feel like you're just trying to pull something over on them, so. But it was working with, with the city clerk that we came with the 60 days. And the borough is 60, right, Madam Clerk?
I do not recollect immediately, I can look that up for you.
Do you have a follow up, Mr. Ruffridge?
Uh, no, other than to, I was, uh, interested in hearing, uh, Ms. Sainer's response on the borough.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, we'll call for the vote.
Uh, Mr. Mayor? Uh, might we postpone that vote until I, we, I didn't know if, uh, Ms. Sainer was looking up that answer right now or is that, is that something she would need time for?
I am looking at the moment.
Hold on.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. So KPB 2240 point oh, six, oh establishes a 60 day period before legislation can be brought back.
Thank you.
Any further comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Carrie.
I move to amend the matter before us to have a 90 day rather than a 60 day, uh, limit before something can be brought up again.
Do we have a second, Ms. Hutchings?
Yes, I'll second that.
Go ahead, Mr. Carrie.
I just, uh, I think everything I heard said, um, by others, it's also, it's reasonable. Uh, people need a little bit of time maybe to get more information and sometimes even kind of cool off. And so it seemed to me three months is, yeah, it's not a terrible wait and yet it's enough to, uh, allow all of us to do a better job. So to me, that's the number I would go with.
Thank you, Ms. Carrie. Are there any other comments by the council? Ms. Pamela Parker?
Mayor Whitney, uh, I believe 90 days is too long, particularly with cases like what we saw recently where the ordinance, um, was not even brought before the council for public comment. That means that we'd have to wait an additional 90 days for something to come back to potentially hear from our residents about the issue. Um, so I ju, I feel like that is just, it's, it's too long. I think 60 days, um, is reasonable, um, to bring something back before the council, um, to discuss. I think that's plenty of time to find information, for folks to cool off before they come back to give public comment, which is important. So I would not be supporting the amendment to extend it to 90 days.
Any further comments from the council? Seeing none, no, we'll call for roll call vote on the, uh, motion to amend.
Councilmember Lisa Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Pamela Parker?
No.
Carrie?
Yes.
Chilton?
No.
Student Representative Cox?
Yes.
You have four yes votes and two no votes.
The motion to amend to 90 days has passed on a four to two vote. Are there any further discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, uh, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Pamela Parker?
No.
Carrie?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Lisa Parker?
Yes.
Student Representative Cox?
Yes.
You have five yes votes and one no vote.
The, um, ordinance 2020 dash zero, three, zero is passed on a five to one vote. Moving on to, uh, item number three, ordinance 2020 dash zero, three, one, further suspending restrictions on council attendance by teleconference is established in Soldatna Municipal Code 2.040, excuse me, 2.04 point zero, one, zero, uh, subsection D, uh, introduced by Vice Mayor Parker. I may have a motion to enact.
Move to enact ordinance 2020 dash zero, three, one.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. May I have a second? Second by Ms. Hutchings. A report from Vice Mayor Parker.
Um, this is again, an administrative matter, uh, under our current code right now. Um, we need to put this in place. I would defer maybe to the city clerk to provide further explanation. This is just keeping us current, it's our code.
Thank you, through the mayor. So our city code currently only allows council members to attend, um, six meetings per year from November through the end of October via teleconference or prior to video conferencing, it was just teleconference. And when we started trying to social distance and keep things safe, we passed a ordinance, the emergency ordinance, the original ordinance, suspended that portion of city code and then we extended it by resolution or, I'm sorry, by ordinance again. And this would again, extend that same lifting of those provisions through April 30th of 2021. And without that, the unexcused, uh, at, at six meetings, it becomes, you can't attend teleconference and then it becomes an unexcused absence. So lifting these restrictions while we have in place social distancing and COVID mitigation practices would be in the council's best interest.
Thank you, Ms. Sainer. The public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand. If you would like to comment, app users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. I see no hands raised. Um, we'll bring it back to the council. Are there any council comments? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Ruffridge?
Yes.
Pamela Parker?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Lisa Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Student Representative Cox?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Ordinance 2020 dash zero, three, one has passed on a six to zero vote. Moving on to ag, agenda item number eight, new businesses, ordinance for introductions. There are none tonight. Um, B is resolutions and that will be Resolution 2020, excuse me, 2021 dash zero, zero, one, updating the Soldatna Regional Sports Complex COVID-19 protocols introduced by Councilmember Ruffridge. May I have a motion to adopt?
I move to adopt Resolution 2021, zero, zero, one.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffridge, or do I have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Pamela Parker. A report from Councilmember Ruffridge. Mr. Ruffridge?
Uh, did I lose connection? Can you hear me?
Sorry.
We can hear you.
Ah, sweet. It's my, uh, you had asked me for a report, right, Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry, my internet cut out. Yes, okay. Uh, so this is a, uh, resolution, um, just to update our sports center, uh, policy. I know this was something we had talked about at the end of last year. Um, and I think that there was some, uh, support on the council uh, to maybe, uh, take a look at what our, um, policies were, what policies were in place prior to the sports center closing after the governor's announcement. Uh, and this resolution, uh, gets us, uh, to, to basically that point with a, with a couple of changes, as you can see in the resolution, uh, in the highlighted sections and columns. Uh, and certainly would appreciate, uh, your consideration and support and discussion on this item as we try to, uh, step our way back into, uh, some activities and things going on in the sports center in a safe and productive manner. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Ruffridge. Uh, at this time, I'd ask the administration if, uh, you have any, if there was any comments?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Uh, no specific comments. Um, you know, we've reviewed the legislation and, and, uh, assisted with the, uh, the matrix, identifying rules in place at, at different timeframes based on, um, you know, current happenings with the, uh, with the health pandemic. Um, obviously it's, uh, things change and it's moving targets. So, um, we're, uh, we're pleased to have a clear and concise set of data in front of council so that you can make informed decisions and, um, uh, consider a resolution that will give the administration, uh, clear direction on, on how to administer, uh, protocols at the, uh, sports center. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Cornelius. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please, uh, raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. And we have a number of them on. First one with a hands up will be Tamara Miller. Uh, Ms. Miller, please state your name and address for the record and you have three minutes.
Hi there, um, my name's Tamara Miller, four, six, five, two, three, Blue Shadow Court, Soldatna. Um, I am a parent, member of the Kenai Peninsula Hockey Association and have been for many years and I, I've helped, um, run several programs for them. Um, and so I'm calling in on behalf of them and also as just a, a, a resident here. Um, the sports center, um, these guidelines that are being proposed are, are definitely much better and I really appreciate you guys looking at that. Um, but I think it's really important for everybody there on the council to recognize that the users of the sports center all have mitigation plans. KPHA has a very specific mitigation plan. We also fall under the Alaska State Hockey Association that has a mitigation plan and we all under USA Hockey. So we So we are following quite a few lists, and it's really frustrating, I guess you would say, to have the city come in and micromanage more. We feel like we should be able to run our programs. We're, we're doing what we need to be doing. We've had very low incidences of cases of COVID, and we don't really feel like we should have more restrictions put on us. But with that being said, I just want to address a couple of things in this proposal. Currently, masks are required for everybody on the ice, and I see that the proposal eliminates that requirement for players, but it still requires it for coaches and officials. And I would just request that that one portion be removed because coaches and officials are also exercising. If you've ever watched a hockey game and there's ice officials out there, they get very, very sweaty. They're going up and down the court or up and down the ice. And I think requiring them to wear masks while they're doing that on the ice falls under the same issues we're having with the kids. High school started this week, and several of the kids had near asthma attacks wearing masks on the ice. So it really is a big issue. Secondly, I would like to address the capacity limits. For youth hockey, it's, it's really not an issue because we don't get large crowds at youth hockey games typically. But as high school hockey comes into play, you could get a crowd, you know, maybe two hundred, three hundred. Those are good nights for a high school hockey game, right? And that building holds over thirty-two hundred people capacity. I got that number from Andrew Carmichael himself. So it is easy to social distance in that building, and the staff have done a great job putting markers on the grounds, up in the stands. You know, putting capacity limits in there is just another something that somebody has to try and enforce, and everybody is doing their part and trying to social distance, and that building is perfect for, perfect for it. And so I would just ask you all to look at those items and maybe modify this. This is a good plan, but it's really not a necessary plan because we have so many little mitigation things we're already following, and, and it just, you know, we're all volunteers too, and, and we're trying to keep the kids on the ice and keep them healthy and active. And so I would just suggest making some minor changes, again, to the, the coaches and officials having to wear masks on the ice. I, I think it's perfectly acceptable for them to wear it on the benches, you know, during a game or whatever. And the capacity limit should be adjusted or removed.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Miller, and we'll go to the next hand raised, and that's for Gen twenty twenty. Gen twenty twenty, you have, please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
So this is Jennifer Youngberg, four seven three four zero, philosopher, Court, Saldana. I greatly apologize for that Gen twenty twenty because had I known that would come up, that's the last thing I want to be reminded of. But it's also very appropriate for this particular resolution and proposed change. I would like to thank Mr. Ruffridge for introducing this. I feel the first speaker spoke very great and eloquently about this and hit the points very well. My seven-year-old plays hockey. She does have asthma, and I do have concerns for her health, but not, even if she didn't have asthma, I'm concerned about these kids running around. They can get extremely sweaty. It's really hard to believe when you're sitting in the stands kind of freezing, you know, and some people bring mini heaters, at least to the Kenai rink, they were bringing those, but these kids get very sweaty, and it is a huge workout. So everyone's doing their part, and if anyone wants this to be over, I know it's you, which means you and me, everybody wants COVID to be over, but people are already practicing, you know, social distancing and wearing masks where appropriate, et cetera. So I would please urge you to consider this change and the changes the previous lady expressed as well, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you for your comments. The next individual up with her hands raised is Desi Baker. You have three minutes, and please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, everybody. This is Desi Baker, three four two eight five, Camson Street, Saldana, Alaska, nine nine six six nine. Thank you so much. I know that Andrew and the city manager worked hard to make this new resolution available for us. I'm calling as a representative of the Kenai Peninsula Hockey Club Board, Executive Board, and I want to just also kind of mirror a little bit of what Tammy was saying. Thank you for eliminating or, you know, voting to eliminate masks on the ice. The difficulty with masks on a hockey rink is that they get wet, and from everything that I've read is that when the mask gets wet, it is not working as it should be. And so it's almost just impractical to have, to have that in there. We have been continuing to have practice at Kenai Rink even while the Saldana Rink was closed down, and I understand the buildings are a little bit different, but even with a smaller rink like the Kenai Rink and having more kids on the ice without wearing masks, we did not have a single outbreak of COVID within our hockey community teams during that time where we were all forced to use the Kenai Rink. So I think that that shows that our mitigation plans that we have as Kenai Peninsula Hockey and Alaska State Hockey are working great. I would ask you to look at section four here, the on-ice capacity. The thirty-two on, on ice for all other hockey events, that is a difficult number because sometimes, due to the fact that the Saldana Sports Center is an Olympic-sized rink, we have two teams on that rink at some times, and that's going to put us just barely over that thirty-two when you throw a couple of coaches out there with them. And so just practicality, and because of how big the Saldana Sports Center is, because of how ventilated it is, I wish that we would just make that on-ice capacity right at fifty all the way across. And then I agree with what Tammy's bringing forth on section eight, the hockey organization responsibility. We do our best to follow the rules that ASHA and USA Hockey have on top of our mitigation plans, and we just haven't had the outbreaks in our hockey community. Our parents are really awesome. So thank you, though, for your time, for Andrew, and the, you know, I think Stephanie has been working on this, and we appreciate all the cooperation and everything you guys are doing.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you again for your comments, and I see another hand raised for Christie Stinet. Would you please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes?
My name is Christie Stinet. My address is three six two three nine Cuddy Sark Lane, and I am calling as a coach and as a parent. I coach some of the younger kids, and my son plays on a fourteen, sixteen, eighteen team. He's playing for the high school also. I am on the ice with these kids with their masks on. Everybody's following the rules right now. We have great mitigation plans, but these kids are struggling. My son, he skates with older kids, so he skates quite a bit faster. With it being an Olympic-sized rink, the kids are spread out very well, but he's having dehydration problems because you're, he, he just, his face is covered, he can't breathe very well. These kids are very hot. The younger kids are struggling. They can't see the mask over their heads. They're just having a hard time with having the practice continue. And so it's hard as a coach. It's very distracting, even though we have multiple coaches out there that are helping. We're still distracted by the masks. So, so seeing both sides of it, again, KPHA has a great mitigation plan. Our COVID numbers, my understanding, in the hockey community locally are very, very low, if there have been any. And also, as Tamara Miller had said about, like, the coaches and the refs, we're out there moving around, too. The refs are moving around with those games up and down the ice. It's very, very hard to breathe. I think when we're sitting on the bench as a coach, that's not a problem, but being on the ice is very, very difficult. I think that if, you know, in Kenai, there's still some kids that do wear masks, that's their choice, and Saldana, we don't have a choice. So I appreciate Justin bringing this to the city council, and I would appreciate your consideration to have the kids remove the masks while they're on the ice, wear them in the building, out of the building. Everybody is following the mitigation plan very, very well, but I'm watching it with the kids on the ice, and it's very difficult. So I appreciate you guys considering this and, and, and listening to me, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Stinet. Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you again. I see no other hands raised. Oh, I'll take that back. Mr. Nate Keel. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes, Mr. Keel.
Thank you. My name is Nate Keel. My address is four oh four Lawton Drive in Kenai, Alaska. I appreciate you allowing me three minutes here, even though I'm not a city of Saldana resident. I've certainly spent a lot of time in the sports center over the years since its inception, and I do have two grandchildren who are currently playing youth hockey for the organizations on the peninsula, and so I stay tuned in a little bit on what's going on in that regard. I feel that it's, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Ruffridge for bringing forth this proposal to amend or, or update the COVID-19 protocols at the sports center. I, I know we've all seen the negative of effects and consequences that COVID has had on, on our youth, both locally and across the country. Mask mandates and lockdowns have, have led everything, led from everything from an increase in, in dental disease to depression and unfortunately suicide for our young people. And, and I'm, I'm encouraged that there may be light at the end of the tunnel and that our kids are getting back into schools and getting back into programs and whatnot, and I think it's, it's absolutely critical. So I appreciate doing everything that you do to navigate through the waters and to also consider this measure, and I'm supportive of it. I just wanted to go on the record for that. Also, I wanted you to go on the record, I'll put a different hat on for just a moment. I am the president of the Kenai Brown Bears. I appreciate your time. A few months back, we spoke in a, in a little session that we had, just kind of brainstorming. Just want to reiterate, there were three factors then that impacted our decision to begin playing our season in Minnesota, and they're still true today. One is the NAHL league protocols and guidelines, which have been established, and we have been able to implement successfully with everything from daily decorations to temperature checks to, to washing of the undergear every single day, to fogging the locker rooms, you name it. Every rink and every league across the country has measures in place. As a couple of your prior folks have mentioned, there, there are many protocols and, and systems in place to, to, to deal with this. We've been able to do that successfully as a league and as a team down south. There have been challenges. One of the other challenges we have, the second challenge I mentioned before, is the Alaska Travel Challenge, which is still a challenge today. Obviously, with testing, with, with quarantines and whatnot, traveling in, in the state of Alaska and in, in other states as well, those do, those do present some, some issues to get through as we consider whether or not the team can really come back anytime soon to the peninsula. We're hopeful. We've had a goal all along of trying to play some games in the second half of the season at the sports center. I guess time will tell if, if, if that can really happen. There's obviously a timeline, as I had mentioned, as to whether or not we can do that. And so that third point was, what's the availability at the sports center? I know we don't know that today. I know that you're, you're taking steps here to, to get the kids back on the ice. I think that's awesome, and, and I know time is short tonight, but I did want to say that we're, we're taking every measure. We want to bring the Bears back. It has to be, it has to make sense. It has to be feasible. It has to be sustainable. We want the Bears to be here for a long time, and obviously, this season's been a very difficult season for us, just as it's been for you. So that's our goal. I guess my hope would be that maybe if it makes sense at this time, maybe we can begin, whether it's myself working with Andrew and, and some of our staff or whomever, it might make sense to, to have, have, have some talks and talk about what might work in terms of capacities at the sports center, what might work in terms of strategies to try to mitigate the circumstances and whatnot. We've now played in many rinks around the, the country and throughout the Midwest, and so we've seen some of the things they're doing in various rinks in various states, in their arenas and whatnot, with greatly reduced attendance and whatnot, but still making it work. And if we feel that it could work financially and otherwise and whatnot, then we're all about it, and we'd like to do it. But just wanted to go on record saying I support this, this proposal, and if that makes sense, I would like to engage in some conversation with your rec department or whomever to try to see what the possibilities might be. Our season has been extended, and so now we will play hockey all the way through May due to COVID. That may bode well for us to be able to hopefully get home games in front of our folks on the peninsula.
Thank you, Mr. Keel. Are there any questions from the, the council? Okay, seeing none. I do have one question for you, Mr. Keel. If the Bears were to come back, what would be the anticipated return date?
Well, I think that, you know, initially, we had hoped to realistically come back in March because we, because we need thirty days minimum due to airline tickets and cancellations and travel changes and whatnot. We'd, we'd have to kind of have a plan in place at least thirty days prior. So I, I'm a realist. I'd like to hope that sometime in March, but certainly if we could bring the team back in April and May and be here for the final month of the season and then the playoffs in May, if that's, if that ends up being the reality, so be it. We're just ready to come back and play hockey in front of our fans. Fairbanks is down there as well, and maybe it starts with bringing both of our teams back and having a home and home series with the Ice Dogs, and, and then we see how that's playing out in terms of bringing other teams up subsequently. We have flexibility in our schedule and whatnot. Our schedule's been updated a few times throughout the COVID deal here. But anyway, to answer your question, I, I would hope April and May, we could, we could play some hockey at the sports center, hopefully sooner.
Okay, thank you, and I hope you do get together with Mr. Carmichael and the sports center people and see what can be worked out.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Looking for hands raised, and I do not see any further hands raised. Having no one else who wishes to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments or discussion? Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure, I didn't notice Andrew on the list, so maybe Mr. Zarneski's handling it or the manager, but I'm wondering, on the on-ice capacity, the suggestion that the thirty-two for all other hockey be raised to fifty. So I'd be interested in comment in terms of, is there a reason the thirty-two particularly fits? It was on the original, and would there be a problem if it was raised to fifty?
Mr. Carmichael or Mr. Cornelis, which one would like to answer that?
It wouldn't pose a problem. We had some of those questions arise in earlier conversations with relation to the variability between the older versus the younger kids. Fifty is where we would be for hockey. That could have an effect as, if we do it for fifty for hockey, we would also want to change the section with relation to public skate and raise that to fifty, but that doesn't pose an extenuating issue, I don't believe.
Mr. Cornelis, did you want to add something to that?
I wanted to have a follow-up, yes. I'd like to amend the, the item before us and on on-ice capacity, players, coaches, officials in that category for our proposal, that the thirty-two be amended to fifty, please.
Is there a second to that motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Ruffridge?
Yeah, through the mayor to Mr. Carey. I would second that if we also added in the public skate open limit be fifty per session as Mr. Carmichael stated, if he would restate, please.
Good.
All right, so I understand it, is the motion now will be fifty for A and fifty for B and C also, or, could you please restate it?
Well, on, on ice capacity, clearly it was thirty-two up to fifty. I'm not sure where the other one was. Justin, if you can help?
It's, public skate is currently set at forty in this resolution. That would need to be-
If we could move that to fifty, please.
Could we perhaps just simplify and say fifty across the board for all three categories?
Excellent. That'd be real good.
Did you get that, though, Ms. Sander?
Yes, would you like me to restate it?
Do what?
Would you like me to restate it?
Please do.
So just for clarification, the motion that is currently before the council would amend section four, hockey on ice capacity for all three things to be raised to 50. So 50 on ice for U8 and U6, 50 on ice for all other hockey events, 50 on ice for freestyle, and section five would be amended for public skate to have 50 persons per session. Is that correct?
Well, my intent was only for the middle one, but maybe it is to be all of them.
Mayor Whitney?
Mike?
Go ahead, Ms. Parker. Pamela Parker.
Thank you. And Mr. Carmichael, if you could, um, help me out with this one. I thought I remember you saying that at one point the capacity for freestyle skate is limited to 25 even during non-COVID times, just because people are out there freestyling. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that if that's supposed to be at 25, that we're not actually doubling that amount or potentially-
Mr. Carmichael?
For the purposes of COVID, the limits kick in, but 25 is the normal limit just for spatialities.
Okay, so if we could make sure that that one isn't doubling in an attempt to get all the other ones up to 50 as well.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Uh, was there a second to that amendment?
I believe Mr. Ruffridge did.
Well, I, yeah, I just want to make sure that we're really clear on what I was seconding here. So I'm with Mr. Carey on 50, amending section four, letter B, 50 on ice for all other hockey events, and section five, public skate on ice capacity to 50 persons per session. That's what I was-
That's my intent as well.
Thank you.
Is that, uh, same as your, Mr. Carey?
Yes, sir.
All right. Ms. Sander, can you repeat this so we all understand?
Okay, so the motion would amend, and I'm going to read the entire section four. Hockey on ice capacity, the allowed on ice capacity numbers include players, coaches, and officials are established as followed. A would remain 44 on ice for U8 and U, U6 and U8. B would be amended to fif, from 32 to 50 on the ice for all other hockey events. C would remain 25 on the ice for freestyle. Section five would be amended, public skate on ice capacity, the allowed on ice capacity during public skate is limited to, and it would increase from 40 to 50 persons per session.
Is that the understanding of the motion maker and the second?
Yes.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we will vote on the motion to amend. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lisa Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Pamela Parker?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Student Representative Cox?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
The motion to amend has passed on six to O, and so we are back to the main motion. Any further discussion? Ms. Pamela Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Um, so I'd like to move to amend section one, um, to read, all persons entering the building are required to wear masks at all times except athletes, coaches, and officials when they are on the ice or in the players, or on the players benches.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Ruffridge. Ms. Parker, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Um, so we did hear from folks tonight and through some emails over the last couple of days that while it's wonderful that we're not requiring players to wear masks when on the ice, that it is still a challenge for coaches and officials to wear masks while out on the ice. And then the part about the players benches, I included because we did hear from someone involved with hockey that it could potentially come up later on, whether or not we meant actually on the ice or players benches. And it would make sense for players to come off, sit down, take their helmet off, put their mask on, put their helmet back on, and then have to do that exact opposite to go back out on the ice in just a few minutes. So I wanted to make sure that that was clear in our policy.
There any other discussion from the council? Ms. Hutchings?
Yes. And so what I'm curious is you want to remove the coaches and officials from wearing masks, is that correct?
Yes, just based on what we heard from folks and emails and tonight, that it is a challenge. Um, one email we received talked about, uh, officials, um, having difficulty blowing their whistle when they wear masks and that it could lead to skirmishes last longer than they need to if the official's not able to access their whistle quickly enough. And then also-
What I did is I pulled up USAhockey.com to see what they were saying. And they're saying coaches and other support personnel should wear their masks at all times. So I didn't know if that had any bearing on it for you or not.
Thank you. I would assume that the individuals that were asking for this change were following up with their guidelines that they have been given from their head organization. So I'm not sure if their policies are different than this. I don't know. It's probably too late to bring them back now to talk about it, but, um, this is just what we heard from folks utilizing the sports center. So I just wanted to bring this forward.
Yeah. Well, my thought is that we should leave the coaches and the support personnel with their masks. I mean, the, the kids are going to have their masks off, but when you see that on the USAhockey.com website, that those people are supposed to be wearing their masks, I'm, I'm surprised that they would say they don't want to wear them. No.
Any further council comments? Mr. Carmichael, did you want to add something? Seeing none, uh, the motions before us, uh, would you please restate the motion?
Section one, masks. All persons entering the building are required to mask, wear masks at all time except athletes, coaches, and officials when on the ice and on the benches. Is that correct, Ms. Parker?
Thank you.
Uh, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lisa Parker?
No.
Hutchings?
No.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Pamela Parker?
Yes.
Carey?
No.
Chilton?
Yes.
Student Representative Cox?
No.
You have three yes votes and three no votes.
I'm going to vote no on it, um, with the suggestion that maybe, um, an amendment comes through or another motion to change it to, um, just the officials. So the motion failed, the amended, um, motion failed on a four to three vote, uh, three no, excuse me, three yes and four no.
Mayor Whitney, would ever you ask for some clarification on that? Are you suggesting that if it were just officials and not coaches?
Yes, I'm suggesting that if, um, a motion was made to, um, not require the officials to wear their mask, uh, that would be fine.
And would this count as defeated legislation and would I need to wait 90 days to bring this back up again?
No, this is not legislation and it's amendment to a legislation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well then I move to amend section one to read, all persons entering the building are required to wear masks at all times except the athletes and officials when they are on the ice or players benches.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffridge. Any discussion? Ms. Parker? Any, Ms. Hutchings?
So I guess my question is, if coaches are going to continue wearing masks and other support personnel are supposed to be wearing masks, who are the officials that are not going to wear masks?
These would be the referees, the folks that were referenced that were also skating back up and down the ice in addition to the players and having to make decisions very quickly about issues that are on the ice and make their decisions known in a timely manner.
Vice Mayor Parker, you had your hand up.
Um, I had a question. Um, at the end of the proposed amendment, um, you had added, well, also on the bench. Can you explain that, particularly for officials?
Yeah, I guess that part wouldn't really apply here. We can take that part out. They shouldn't be sitting on the benches, I'm guessing.
And my interpretations of officials are the on ice officials, the ones that are out there skating and calling penalties and scores and stuff. There any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, call for the roll.
Councilmember?
Before we do, so it would read, all, all persons entering the building are required to wear masks at all times except athletes and officials when they are on the ice, period. Correct?
Can it?
Yes.
And would the final sentence remain the same? Coaches must wear masks at all times, even when on the ice?
Thank you. Suppose so, yes.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Lisa Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Pamela Parker?
Yes.
Carey?
No.
Chilton?
Yes.
Student Representative Cox?
Yes.
You have five yes votes and one no vote.
Uh, the motion to amend passed on a five to one vote. Moving on, there any further discussion on the made motion? Mr. Ruffridge?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would actually like to propose an amendment again to section one, if possible, uh, to add at the end of that phrase as amended, uh, the sentence, by definition, on the ice includes penalty benches and team benches. For clarification, please.
Would you restate that again, please?
Gladly. At the end of section one, I would like to amend by adding, by definition, on the ice includes penalty benches and team benches.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Pamela Parker. Uh, Mr. Ruffridge, would you like to speak to it?
Uh, certainly. I think, uh, Councilmember Parker was sort of, uh, describing this, uh, already, but, uh, there's a little bit of a confusion as to what is considered on the ice, um, especially during a game time scenario, uh, where quick changes are happening. You don't want, uh, kids or players coming off the, off the actual ice into a penalty box or a player's box, taking off their helmet, putting on a mask, putting their helmet back on, and then doing that again to get back on the ice. And so wanted to be clear in section one and define on the ice as including, uh, player and penalty boxes as well.
Any other discussion? Yeah, I have one question for you, Mr. Ruffridge. Um, um, in the penalty box, there is usually, quote, an official in there. Are you suggesting that they not be wearing masks or they would continue to wear a mask?
So based off of how section one is going to read now, uh, the official, um, is not required to wear a mask since that was something that we had just amended. And if on the ice by this definition would include the penalty box, then, uh, it would be up to the official as to whether they would need to wear one or not, but it would not be required.
Thank you. Um, any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, would you please restate that, uh, motion to amend and then call for the vote?
So section one will read, masks, all persons entering the building are required to wear masks at all times except athletes and officials when they are on the ice. Coaches must wear masks at all times, even when on the ice. And by definition, on the ice includes penalty benches and team benches.
Good. Uh, call for the vote?
Councilmember Lisa Parker?
No.
Hutchings?
No.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Pamela Parker?
Yes.
Carey?
No.
Chilton?
Yes.
Student Representative Cox?
No.
You have three yes and three no.
Yes.
Final vote is four yes, three no.
Motion pa, uh, the motion to amend passed, uh, four to three. Back to the made motion again. Any further discussion? Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Having been involved in, um, sports, uh, swimming, gymnastics, and wrestling, I'm aware that a local group can normally not have regulations that are more lenient than what the governing organization is, as it goes up the run. And so I just want to say I really appreciate the work that's been done on this and I think it is much better. Uh, but I hope that we're not, we're not putting in more lenient standards than what the governing authority says, uh, because I don't, I don't think we'd have the authority to do that. But I did hear clearly from members of, of the association that they conform to, again, the higher rules. And so I, I just want to state that. And the last thing, uh, I was really impressed with the, uh, young individuals on teams, uh, and an email from one of them when he spoke about how difficult it was, uh, to have the mask and as to how it, uh, interfered. So I just really appreciate it when the athletes themselves write to emails and telling us about experience. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Ms. Pamela Parker?
Um, thank you. I did have one final amendment. Um, I move to amend section six, spectators to read, um, only 25% of the sports center capacity shall be allowed in the building during any ice time.
Is there a second to that motion? Seeing no second, that, uh, motion fails for... Any other further comments? Mr. Cornelius, you have a comment?
Uh, I do, just a brief comment, um, as I've listened to testimony and, uh, and the council deliberate. Just a, a couple of notes, um, that spectator capacity will indeed impact, you know, some users, uh, of the facility, uh, as we heard tonight. Um, and, uh, and secondly, um, you know, this resolution is effective immediately upon its adoption. Uh, currently there's no sunset date, uh, associated with it. So the administration would, um, obviously take this, uh, whatever, if, if a resolution passes, uh, we would, um, uh, follow the, uh, protocol established here, um, for the time being until, uh, further legislation either, either changed or modified the protocols, uh, associated with the COVID-19 pandemic. So, um, just to, a couple of little comments that, that this legislation will be, uh, effective, um, if it, if, if it passes at, in its current state and, and changes as a resolution. And I can let the, uh, the city clerk, uh, comment further about, uh, mechanisms to make modifications to the protocol set forth by council in this resolution. But, um, the other thing I was going to note is, is that section two does identify specific entities, uh, that are allowed to conduct games and scrimmages. Um, and with that, I will conclude my remarks. And with that, I will conclude my remarks, and I appreciate the deliberation tonight by council.
Any further council comments?
If I could, your mayor?
Oh, good.
Mr. Carmichael, go ahead.
With relation to Councilman Parker's progression, motion for 25%, 25% would put it at approximately 800. They have done the metrics with city manager Queen's engineering background and brain. If we establish at a six-foot social spacing, a maximum capacity of 311, just for information's sake, that we can accommodate that with all bleachers out, and that's assuming all dots or all dot bottoms are filled with one bottom and not necessarily two families. So, that could possibly address the concerns expressed earlier with relation to when high school does start the games, unless we want to review this again at such time before then. The first So-Hi game in the group complex is on January 26th at that time. So, the 80 spectators for that particular event could be an issue. Obviously, we're still trying to operate with the crystal ball, and those are some numbers that are still kind of an elephant in the room for us as well as them, in terms of trying to gain some attendance and those things.
Just, if I heard that right, the first sanctioned high school game is January the 26th, is that correct?
Correct.
And as you said, I know I recall that we had set a limit of a social distancing of 311, so, thank you. Mr. Carrie?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, to facilitate this, I would amend what we have before us under spectators and ask it to be raised to 250.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Pamela Parker. So, the motion is now to raise the spectator limit to 250. There any discussion? Mr. Carrie?
I didn't go with the higher number because I know that's the exact maximum. And again, I just felt I'd rather give us a little bit of wiggle room. With social distancing, I think it's especially important that people, young people, especially young adults, be able to get together. And again, there's been numerous things recently in terms of mental health of people that aren't able to get around. And so, my idea of the 250, assuming that the mask room plays, that they're six feet, I think this could be a really healthy thing for young adults to go to, and so I did it for that purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrie. Ms. Pamela Parker, did you, excuse me, Mr. Chilton, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know everyone is fatigued about this. We want to see our community get back to normal. I want to see people in that rank using it to its maximum capability again as soon as possible. But, you know, this is a marathon. This isn't a sprint, and yes, things are improving. It's been great to see our trends continue to spiral back to normal again, but we're not there yet. It's not time to flip the switch and go back to full operations. I really think we need to ease into this, looking at this resolution. I'm so glad we had this before us. I think this is a great first step. We're making a lot of progress easing back in into what is closer to normality with this. But I do have a lot of concerns about jumping the spectator cap that high that quickly. I would absolutely be supportive of increasing it again in a couple of weeks. But I would, my stance right now is, let's start with this. Let's see how this works with the community. I know that theoretically, there's a high cap there when you factor in social distancing, but I'm very speculative that we would see people actually adhering to those social distance dots. So, let's try this first, see how it works, and then if counts continue to stay low, people are adhering to the rules that we set forth tonight, next meeting, let's bump the cap and just keep gradually doing it. Again, it's a marathon, not a race. Let's ease back into it so we don't see this regress on us. I will not be supporting this amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chilton. Any further comments from the council? Ms. Pamela Parker?
Thank you. And, Mr. Chilton, I absolutely understand where you're coming from, and I know that it's challenging to be optimistic about all of the guidelines put in place being followed. But I do believe that we have to have a higher spectator count, particularly when you're looking at potentially, you know, 45 to 50 players there for the games. That's about one and a half family members in attendance to watch them. So, it goes back to comments I made previously that were then limiting the number of family members that can come and watch. And if you've got a parent bringing their three other children with them, well, then that limits other families that are not able to watch their kids play, or which kids do you leave at home, which I don't recommend that. So, I just think that increasing the cap, being very clear about what our guidelines are, requiring masks the entire time, I think that we can safely do this and still allow our families to enjoy watching their kiddos play hockey.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. If I could to Mr. Carmichael, should the number be increased to 250, will the staff there at the sports center set it up and set up the social distancing and put the Xs on the seats and in the bleachers so people know the appropriate distances?
We currently have the seats dotted, and on the main permanent side, we can easily add those to the folding bleachers so that the people have a guideline to follow by. In terms of that, we can also, if need be, if concerns still arise that are heightened, possibly conduct and work with So-Hi initially with those folks, which we've had very great luck. They've got a team manager that just rocks and takes care of business. And to be able to, then, when it comes to Exodus times, be able to shut people out the side doors, part of, from one side of the arena, out one side of the doors, and bring them out, the other half out the other side, and go from there. There's some measures we can take to help get to there and create those spaces that we need.
I'll follow up on my, Mayor Whitney.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, before you would increase the numbers, that this would need to be, the distancing would need to be put in place?
We have, it would take about, it'd take us one and a half days to get all the rest of the dots in, one day to order them from Sherman's, and then the other half, and then a couple hours to get them into place, and then we would be ready.
And there are no major events between now and January 26th, correct?
Correct. We have no major events, period.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney.
Any other discussion? Mr. Carmichael, I do have one question. Attendees would still, spectators would still are required to wear a mask during the event. Family groups, mother, father, couple of kids, grandmother, can they sit as a group?
With relation to the overall number or with relation to the masking requirement? Because as I'm hearing the resolution or read the resolution, if you're in the building, you would need to wear a mask.
Yes, I understand that.
Which would be underlying that. And then after that, there's been discussion with relation to what constitutes a space, whether that six-foot dot occupies three people from the same family. Is that one and lends, is that one person that contributes to the 250? Or is that three that contribute to the 250? And that's a delineation that nobody has the answer to, and I haven't seen anywhere as having been established as a metric.
Well, I guess my question, maybe my question wasn't word correctly. But a family group that comes in, will they be able to sit together or will they have to distance?
I don't know. That I would, you know, as everything we've looked at on the metrics that we have been able to operate with during the COVID times has broken things down by family units, same domicile, as a metric to work with that measure. So, if we had a 250 limit, then we would be, that was just flat out without respect to households or anything else, we'd have 250 people, and then it would be up to them then to work within those confines, mother and father sit next together, and then there might be some dots open, which then further social distances the various people within the overall facility and creates greater spaces. So, in some senses, it would condense same household, but in other senses, it would actually spread out people even more.
Mayor Whitney?
Mr. Cornelius?
Mayor Whitney?
Go ahead, Mr. Cornelius.
Yeah, to, I guess, try and directly answer your question, the reasonableness of enforcement will need to be a judgment call on our staff. You can guess the difficulty of enforcing social distancing for non-family or household members. So, that's just something that you'll have to keep in mind as you pass this legislation or consider it, that, as Andrew said, we do have the ability to definitively limit capacity to a certain figure. When it comes to ascertaining which groups are meeting specific CDC guidelines or other guidelines for, you know, household members, not social distancing, that's going to have to be a judgment call and enforced to the best of our ability, which you can imagine will be difficult. I can offer that, according to the calculation that we provided and previously discussed, based on the existing bleachers in the facility and taking into account the six-foot distancing on those bleachers above and below, we do believe that 250 people as proposed would be able to physically socially distance at that six feet. Obviously, many would choose not to, and then we'll, you know, we'll be faced with enforcing things to the best of our ability based on what we see and what we can do. So, just wanted to mention that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Carmichael.
Another aspect also is that when each event has their own personalities, and when the high school events and ASIA events and those type of events, they bring with a, I'm missing a word, but an ability to effect measures and get cooperation at a level higher than the normal general population. So, be whether it's parents or kids, when the principal or the athletics director or the teacher or somebody comes through, they tend to get very good cooperation. So, as a step into larger crowds, the So-Hi High School or even Kenai High School events would be an excellent training ground to get people used to the distances for which we hope.
Thank you, Mr. Carmichael. Any further discussion from the council? Would the clerk please restate the motion to amend and then call the roll?
The motion to amend would amend Section 6 spectators. Only 250 spectators shall be allowed in the building during any ICE event.
Roll call, please.
Counsel member Lisa Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
No.
Ruffridge?
No.
Pamela Parker?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Chilton?
No.
Student representative Cox?
Yes.
You have three yes votes and three no votes.
And I will vote yes. Motion to amend passes four to three. Back to the main motion. Any further discussion on the main motion? Vice Mayor Parker?
I'd like to call for the question.
I'm sorry, what?
I would like to call for the question.
And we need to have a second on that? Do we have a second on the call for the question?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Please call the roll.
Counsel member Lisa Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Pamela Parker?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Student representative Cox?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
The main motion is now up for a vote. Please have the roll call.
Counsel member Lisa Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Pamela Parker?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Student representative Cox?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Resolution 2021-001 as amended has passed on a six to zero vote. Moving on to the next agenda item, and that will be item number nine, mayor and council reports, mayor's report and proclamations. This past, since our last meeting, I've attended a couple of teleconference calls with the governor's office and the governor regarding his budget, the permanent fund and resource development issues. Some of these items that he has in the budget, like the PFD and such, will require legislative approval and then come out to a vote of the citizens of the state of Alaska. He's also proposed a bonding issue of about $350 million for capital projects, and that will also, hoping for an early vote on that by the legislator and a vote of the people so those projects could get out on the street by construction season this summer. Also attended a couple of the Project Homeless Connect Zoom meetings over the last couple of weeks, and they're preparing for the events that are going to be held January 27th through February 10th. They're working very diligently on that, and they have quite a bit of items and plans to provide for the homeless and others that might be in need. Something that I would like to see the administration start looking at and maybe move on quickly is the reopening of the public library. Things are getting to the point where I think people need to have that extra ability to go to the library and either read, use the computers or whatever. So, I'd hope they'd look at that and then start reconsidering that. And then I will be absent for the February 10th meeting, and I would ask that Ms. Vice Mayor Parker would be able to take charge of that meeting. That is all I have. Council reports on boards and commission, planning and zoning commission, Ms. Hutchings?
We had a planning and zoning meeting on January 6th, and the main item that was before the planning and zoning commission was Resolution 2021-001, which was a resolution recommending that Section 17.10.285 Kenai River Overlay District be amended to correct citations to the Kenai Peninsula Borough Code and to provide consistency in regulations of activities along anadromous streams. And it passed unanimously.
Thank you.
And that's all that we really had.
Thank you. The next one would be Airport Commission, Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. At the Airport Commission meeting held on December 17th, for the first time in a while, there is now a full Airport Commission, so that was nice to have. They elected a vice chair. Alex Bias is now the vice chair of the Airport Commission. There was discussion about the snow removal at the airport, and then they also talked about tree removal. There's going to be, they've identified 20 trees on the west end of the airport that need to be removed. And the meeting was also attended by Mayor Whitney, who... And the meeting was also attended by Mayor Whitney, who was, was there, and I don't know if I missed anything important that needed to be added, Kyle or Mayor Whitney, that you would also add to Airport Commission meeting.
I believe you covered everything.
That's it.
That's the end of your report. Moving on to city manager's report, a report from the acting city manager.
I will keep this very brief. We, oh, first to the con of the library, I do believe they are planned to open on Monday. So we will have some public availability on Monday. I'm also happy to report that the installation of our automated book locker system is underway. I don't think it's quite operational yet, but we'll have the ability for folks to obtain books and drop off books right at the exterior of the front entrance. So pretty neat device. The only thing I will add is that we took delivery of our new M-series grader on the 4th of January. It still has that new grader smell. It's pretty awesome. It was $386,000, and it replaced a 1988 G-series grader with 16,000 hours on the meter, and that was the second meter. So kudos to our maintenance department for really making our, our iron last. So as you can imagine, we had some challenges with intermittent rain. I know we tried to blow the center, center berm, I think, two or three times, and it would freeze solid such that we couldn't blow it. But fortunately, our equipment and operators are able to cut pretty good paths in the middle so that really no, no impact to traffic in that regard. So lastly, I'll add that we are wrapping up kind of our final design efforts on the cemetery expansion. It's something we haven't talked about in a while, but we, we do plan to embark on that expansion project when weather allows this spring. So we'll probably begin the bidding process here shortly. That really concludes my report for tonight. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Sanner.
Thank you. I just had a couple of things to add. So we have been actually selling, reserving new locations in the Veterans Expansion, and the GIS mapping should be updated and available online later next week. And I also wanted to point out to council that we did, since our sound system was fairly new, it was a moderate upgrade to add the camera systems, and we are excited for the potential of having all of us back in here with the new video streaming capabilities. And that was all my, my only additions.
Thank you. And I'm glad to hear that the library is opening next Monday. Next item on the agenda is item 11, public comments. Members of the public will have three minutes to comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. I see one hand raised right now, Desi Baker. Please state your name for the, name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. Go ahead. You need to unmute, Ms. Baker, and go ahead.
Sorry, Mayor, I was talking to myself. Hi, this is Desi Baker, 34285 PMSN Street, Soldatna, Alaska 99669. I just want to thank you guys for passing the resolution to get more kids on the ice safely at the sports center. I do want to just bring clarification to what Ms. Hutchinson said in lieu of what Ms. Parker brought forth as far as what USA Hockey requires, because we are very adamant about following USA Hockey. We're very adamant about following the Alaska State Hockey Association. And so if you are to go to read through it more, it does say that face masks should not be worn while the kids are actively on the ice, and that is also for officials. If you scroll down a little bit longer, right there on their main page. So again, thank you for your time tonight, and I look forward to just keep making it better for everybody. Have a good night, guys.
Thank you. Are there any questions for, from the council? Ms. Pamela Parker?
Thank you. And Desi, I just wanted to say thank you to you and the other ladies that testified as well. I knew somebody out there who's smarter than me in relation to hockey would know the answer. So thank you for.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you again. Are there any other comments? I see no additional hands raised, so we will move on to item 12 on the agenda, council comments. And we'll start out with our student representative, Mr. Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if you know this, but we have gone back to in-person school with an AB schedule, which means two days a week we're there, and then we switch off every other Friday. I went to school two days this week, and then the B schedule gets Friday this week, because no school Monday next. With school back in session, we also have sports starting back up. Practices have started for basketball, hockey, and a new sport that's new to Sohigh for basketball cheer. Our athletic director, Mr. McFall, has started an e-sport as a club and as a spring sport, but it's kind of starting as a club this year and will be instated as a sport next year. They already have a coach picked out. And then actually this weekend, this Sohigh ski team has a ski meet in Homer. We are dueling against Homer's ski team because with guidelines and mitigation plans, we're only allowed to have a certain number of people at races. So it's just going to be us at Homer there. And then the Soldatna Student Council is, we will be planning spirit days, hopefully, and spring fundraisers and events, maybe a, not necessarily prom because of mitigation plans, we will not be able to do a dance, but maybe a spring festival of some kind. We are looking into maybe lanterns, like floating lanterns. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. And yes, I have noted schools back in session because there's a traffic around my, my house every time I leave now. So next one, Mr. Chilton.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'd just like to thank our streets department for their work this year on keeping our streets clear. So I definitely noticed a significant improvement on response time on getting out there this year. One request or maybe question I had is, I don't know if it's possible if we could maybe lay down some thin gra, uh, thin little pebbles or, or really heavy coats sanded down at the, the Cobuck Readout intersection. When you're going down Cobuck Crossing Readout, that intersection is, seems like every other day, it's an ice rink coming to us, getting stopped at that sign. I've seen a number of cars run that already in the last couple of weeks, just sliding right through. So I think there's a potential danger there that should probably be addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Chilton. Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. For a long time, we've heard that local government is the best democracy you have, and that people show up and they're interested, and we listen to them. And so I just want to say, what we're doing is really good for democracy, and I'd sure like to see the national level, level get a little bit better, get a lot better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Vice Mayor Parker?
No, no additional comment at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
And happy to hear.
Ms. Pamela Parker?
Thank you. Yeah, this, this last week was really rough. I know I'm not alone in saying that I was really saddened by the acts we witnessed at our Capitol. Just the attempt to disrupt our elected officials and their attempts to administer a peaceful transition of power, it's just, it's such a stain on our country. And it was a really sad day last week. And I, I really can only hope that as we get closer to inauguration day, that we don't see any other acts of violence perpetuated against American citizens. It was just not, not good for our country, and I just really hope we don't see anything else like that moving forward. And I just wish you all a good rest of your day and just a peaceful week next week. I feel like that's all we can hope for.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Ms. Hutchings?
Well, I wanted to say that I still have a lot of love for our parks, and I, so I drove around and I saw little kids skating in the Soldatna Creek Park, and I saw lots of adult skaters and young, young people out at Ark Lake. They looked like they were having a great time. And we've had some nice weather to do it in, not like the rest of the state, which seems to be getting rained on and snowed on and slushed on. So I think all is well here, and thank you very much for the opportunity. Good night.
Thank you, Ms. Hutching. Mr. Ruffridge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will second what Ms. Hutchings said, the state of our Parks Department. I had the privilege of attending the family skate out at Ark Lake for a number of weekends in a row, and bravo to whoever is doing that. I can just speak for Tyler, who is there every week that I've been there. Just a fantastic job. Fires, nice and warm, music going, skates for everybody, and it is well attended, and it speaks very well of our city and just the people getting together and enjoying some time out on the ice together. The Soldatna Creek Park path is, is awesome as well, and, and props to the Parks Department for giving us an option to go outside and, and use our skates. On the vaccine front, just a little update, we are in the process of getting vaccines into our community at an unprecedented rate. And I know there has been, you know, frustrations and things from people that are looking to get something right away, and I just want to be clear to everyone here and anyone that might be listening later, we are in the end game, and I will echo what Mr. Chilton was saying about it being a marathon, but we're closer to the end than we are at the beginning. And this vaccine process is, is quite something to behold, and there are so many incredible people in our public health departments working very long hours and doing a lot of great work to get these vaccines out to people. And I just want to say thank you to.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffridge. Moving on to item 13 on the agenda, executive session, annexation, local boundary commission, decisional hearing. City Attorney Brooks Chandler, AS 44.62.310C3, matters which by law municipal charter or ordinance are required to be confidential in accordance with Alaska, in accordance with Alaska statute 44.62.310C3, attorney-client communications are matters which by law municipal charter or ordinance are required to be confidential, therefore may be held in executive session. May I have a motion to enter into executive session, Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I move to enter into executive session to discuss the local boundary commission, final written decision on the city of Soldatna annexation, annexation petition with the city attorney. The executive session will include Mayor Whitney, city council members, the acting city manager, city attorney Brooks Chandler, economic development director John Zarneski, and the city clerk.
And may I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. I just found out city manager queen will also be participating by teleconference.
So we will add city manager queen to that list.
And that agreeable with a second, Ms. Hutchings?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. We will go into executive session. Maybe Ms. Sanner can go over the instructions on how we're going to get into this.
Need to vote.
Are there, oh, I'm sorry. Are there any objections to going into executive session? Seeing none, we will now go into executive session, and Ms. Sanner will tell us how to do this now.
Okay, everyone that is going to the executive session needs to completely log out of this Zoom meeting. Within the next five minutes, you will get a separate invite to join me in a separate Zoom meeting. And for those who are streaming and attending through Zoom, this meeting will be held in pause, and we will come back after the executive session.
We're back on record. Vice Mayor Parker, may I have a motion to? Yeah. Vice Mayor Parker, you have a motion to come out of the executive session?
I move that we come out of executive session.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffridge. Any objections to coming out of the executive session? Seeing no objections, we're out of executive session and back on record. Vice Mayor Parker, do you have a motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Whitney. I would make move that the city of Soldatna file an appeal with the Superior Court with the December 30, 2020 decision of the local boundary commission regarding the city of Soldatna annexation petition.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Chilton. Call for the roll, roll call vote?
Councilmember Lisa Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings? Going to come, Councilmember Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Pamela Parker?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
The motion passes six to zero. Next item on the agenda is number 14, meeting announcements. The following meeting announcements are January 18th, 2021, Library Advisory Board at 5:15 PM, and the second one is January 27th, 2021, City Council Meeting at 6 PM in the council. And well, right now they're on via Zoom meeting. And Ms. Parker, did I see your hand up? Okay. We are now adjourned.